Call to order the December twenty first, two thousand and twenty three, Better City Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Everyone please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United Nations, to the government, which is saying one nation under God.
Thank you. Roll call Lisa, please.
Commissioner Kribel.
Yeah.
Mr. Mento. Mr. Mento is absent. Mayor Langrea.
Here. Um, Mr. Mento is recovering from some minor surgery, so she's not with us here tonight, but uh, she certainly sends on her holiday wishes and her recovery is going very well. So yeah, good, good to know that uh, we do miss her here this evening. Um, some sad news, uh, first to start off, Tom Russo, uh, longtime Atlantic City, lifetime Atlantic City resident and a former city administrator here in the city of Vettner. Um, just a really good, good friend to us when we first got in office.
Absolutely.
Um, he managed uh, us in our blending into our new administration. So uh, he was, uh, he will be missed. Um, led a full life. I mean, gentleman was eighty eight years old and gentleman is the true sense of the word with, with Tom. He was a really good guy. Uh, many of them in the room, I know Jack, you know him. Um, but uh, just, just a really nice guy. I would share the services, but they're private and um, I guess they're just doing something with the family. So we certainly note his passing.
Yes.
That's it. We have, Jack, you're not doing a presentation tonight. You're just on the agenda for any questions or you?
Correct.
Okay, good. Uh, we don't have any department head reports. We're going to defer them to January of two thousand and twenty four, as this is our last meeting of two thousand and twenty three. I know Ernie um, is going to present at our meeting in January. So for, for our water and sewer systems. We don't have any capital discussion tonight. And just for the people who are here tonight, don't always attend our meetings. This is our workshop. We start out with going over the agenda. Thing that we're going to take action on tonight. We'll have some comments back and forth with Commissioner and myself, uh, typically with commissioners and myself. Um, and then we won't take action until our formal meeting that'll start immediately following our workshop. So that is planned for this evening. Um, following items are scheduled for action uh, at our regular meeting tonight. We have no minutes to approve. We'll do those in January. No ordinance introductions. We will have an ordinance, uh, public hearing and adoption of ordinance two thousand and twenty three. That's zero twenty two. Ordinance of the city of Vettner County Atlantic adopting the Wellington Avenue redevelopment plan. That's what I mentioned. Mr. Placter is here to talk about this evening. And what that is, is that is the uh, the building adjacent to the Dollar Agenda, correct? Oh, sorry. He's here for the other one. Sorry.
Sorry.
Got him. I know we have two redevelopment plans on tonight, but um, the first one is Wellington Avenue. And that's to create a redevelopment area for that site. And Tiffany Covialo Morris is here for that application, for that ordinance, if we have any questions. I know you, that's gone to the planning board.
Yes.
And Commissioner Kribel, you were there that night when they reviewed it.
Yes.
You did have some public comment.
Yeah.
I was not able to attend that hearing, but um, I understand it went well. We got some good feedback.
Yeah, I mean, the board was um, I think had, had to know, had to come on board with the design itself. It's not a conventional uh, storage facility, the way that it looks.
Right.
It's looks more, it's, it's kind of um, it's kind of undercover as a building, as a, as an office building, which I think is attractive to our, our gateway there. So there were just a few comments, nothing um, uh, but I think all in favor, obviously, it was passed.
And what that does is it says it's consistent with our master plan and having supported that doctrine uh, moving forward. Um, and this is, I'll say the second step in this process. What'll happen after this, after this is adopted, they will have to come back into the planning board for land use approval for all that. So um, part of the team is here tonight. So if anybody has any questions, we open up to the public. Um, Tiffany is here to answer any of those questions. I don't have any more comments on it. I mean, I was able to review it and saw it uh, before it went to the planning board. So I'm pretty comfortable with it.
So am I. But I think it represents good design. It's bringing it up out of flood harm. It's bringing, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a good use for that space. It's a, it's a desired use for that space according to our master plan, and it's a difficult property to develop. So I think we're lucky to have the opportunity to have it there now. So from my standpoint, they're allowed.
I know Commissioner Mento had some comments when you were first here about buffering the bags. We don't want to look like a storage yard. I think Tiffany, you addressed that that evening.
Yeah.
What's the garden?
You're, and I think you'll probably have to come to the planning board as well to make sure that we offer everything appropriate.
Good. Excellent.
So behind the building, there's going to be boat storage or large vehicle storage? Is that correct?
RV.
But mostly boats.
Mostly boats. Yeah.
And the market here is mostly boats.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, like I said, I think the, the main thing is this is a, this is a thing that's been on the boards or contemplated for decades that is now finally, you know, taking action, which is a benefit to the city.
Agreed. So we'll have the public hearing and adoption on, on that later this evening, hopeful adoption later this evening. Uh, we will go through resolutions by uh, consent on a consent agenda. Resolution is two thousand and twenty three, three sixty three uh, to three ninety seven. There's a lot of threes. Um, the first one and several of these are tax abatements. Um, the first one is three sixty three, which is execution of the tax abatement for block seventy three, lot five, known as seventeen South Troy. And these are new construction projects.
There's a lot.
Yeah, there's a lot of them.
And, and it's a benefit, right? These are, these are things that are, that may not have been pushed forward, but because of where we've kept the tax abatement on, I think it's still working for us.
It is. It's drawing development into the city, new product into the city itself. Um, so that's, I'm just going to go through these real quickly. No questions on them, just.
I read them all, but yeah.
Block ninety three uh, resolution three sixty four is block ninety three, three point oh two, known as one B Austin Avenue. Uh, three sixty five is block one thirty two, lot one point oh two, known as one B North Baltimore Avenue. Three sixty six is block fifty two, lot seven. It's a condominium, also known as fourteen A Hill, South Hillside Avenue. Three sixty seven is block ninety two, lot one point oh eight, also known as two A in North Baton Rouge Avenue. Three sixty eight is block thirty two, lot twenty two point oh two, known as two B Melbourne Avenue. These are half of the twins, obviously. Um, three sixty nine is a tax abatement agreement for block four hundred and seven, point oh one, lot three, known as Six Heart Lane. Number three seventy is a tax abatement for block seventy five, lot one, also known as sixty seven oh nine Atlantic Avenue. And that's it for the tax.
Speaks to the opportunity that's still out there to, to bring in new stock.
Yep. Agreed. And this isn't a full tax abatement. They do is over five years, they start out paying twenty percent and then it rolls into a hundred percent uh, after the fifth year. Resolution three seventy one is a shared services agreement with the city of Brigantine for a qualified purchasing agent. Um, that's uh, I think that's ongoing. We've been using them for a little while. Excuse me?
It'll be outstanding.
Yeah, right. It'll be out. So they'll be doing our QPA for us for the next year, which is helpful. Always like shared services. Um, resolution three seventy two is another shared service agreement between the Office of Emergency Management, City of Vettner, Margate, and the Borough of Longport. Operation of a mobile command trailer obtained through a New Jersey, state of New Jersey leap grant. County coordinates them and does a great job with us. And I think we're the lead on that.
Yep.
We'll maintain it here. We have a place to park it.
Yeah.
Which is always a premium on, you know, it's maybe parking it at the back of the new storage.
Back to the new storage facility, right?
You run out of room. Uh, it'll be a firehouse.
Yeah, and it's a, a state of the art uh, command center that um, that when you need it, you need it.
Yeah.
And, and, and this will be the um, and it's been something that Chief Cahill has, and as well as Chief uh, Fuster can utilize.
As well as our down beach neighbors too, right?
Absolutely.
Good. Resolution three seventy three is refunding a parking permit applications to Lisa Lerner. Three seventy four is refunding after school paint to Joyce Lamb. I had a question on that. What is it?
It was an after school event?
Yeah, an after school event. I did read that. You're right. I'm, I'm okay with that. All right, good. Three seventy five is approval of special events, special items of revenue. This is a chapter one fifty nine. This is a drive sober grant, right, Amy?
Yes.
Um, to uh, council and alcoholism and drug abuse grant from the governor's office. It's total of seventeen five with some matching funds. I think eighty five hundred is the state portion of that. Uh, three seventy seven is enforcement of the no parking within the city of Vettner from January one to January thirty first. This is no parking for special events during that time period, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I want to see the backup of this next one. This is, there we go. Next one is the um, author, no, I just did that. There it is. Three seventy eight is state of New Jersey opposing um, Vettner City opposing an assembly bill fifty six, fifty nine that deals with insurance coverages and increase in casualty insurance. Um, there's several, this is League of Municipalities has asked us to participate in this, and it has several items that they have concerns with. Has urged, legislature has urged to adopt a budget and a levy cap exemptions for property casualty insurance and claims. Administration of legislature should not adopt additional legislation regulations that will increase municipal claims without a thorough and complete analysis of the cost. And the New Jersey Department of Labor and Department of Banking Insurance and New Jersey Department of Community Affairs should meet with representatives of municipal government to discuss ways to reduce property casualty costs. So that's the resolution supporting those asks from the state government.
Right.
So just wanted to, there was no way I was remembering all that.
Yeah.
I read right from the resolution. So, um, and that's a New Jersey League of Municipalities um, asking.
Helping to reduce cost.
Yes. Uh, well, asking.
Asking.
We don't know if that's going to fall on its ephers or not. Resolution three seventy nine is renewal of the nutrition site license with county. Uh, we lease that out to them. This will extend it through two thousand and twenty six. It's over at the community services building next to the library.
Yep.
Resolution three eighty is appointing members to the Vettner City Recreation Board. I think all of them are staying the same, but we're adding Heather Furco.
Okay, yes, yeah, yeah, that's a new member. That's a new member, yes. I, I just want to reach out and thank that group. It's a really hardworking group.
Yep.
It's a big program. They handle a lot of responsibility as well as hiring seasonal kids, um, things like that. They, they do, they do a lot and they, they always, and it's volunteer and they, and they, um, they bring a lot of uh, a lot of, a lot of positive experiences to Vettner.
Yeah, and just to, for the record, the, the ones that are getting reappointed and the new appointments, you have Claudia Vina, Diane Burkebeck, Chief Mike Cahill, Paul Hydro, Joseph Iannozelli, that was one of our firemen, Heather Furco is the new member, Jeffrey Moore is one of our firemen, and.
I sit in on them sometimes and it's always, uh, it's always a good time and an education and they do hard, they do the, they do a lot of good work.
Good. Agreed. Agreed. They, you know, that, just our recreation is just.
Baseball, football.
Yep.
And all the others.
Uh, three eighty one, this is for Thomas E. Chicarone to serve as our city administrator beginning January one, two thousand and twenty four. So that's a resolution. Bringing, bringing Tom back.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. And Tom's been great with this, with my transition from commissioner to mayor. He's been a great help. And with Maria moving up onto the dais, he's been.
Yeah.
Stepped right in and straightened this out a little bit.
Yeah.
Not that Maria wasn't straightening this out.
No.
But Tom brings a wealth of experience in this and it's a pleasure to have here. So.
It's like having a twofer.
Yeah, agreed. Agreed. Half the price.
I have to. Well, thanks, Tom. It's been, it has been a pleasure.
Uh, resolution three eighty two is appoint a local emergency planning committee uh, for a three year term, December one through two thousand and twenty, through uh, this year through this, through November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty six. And just, that's a long list. I'm not going to beat all those. But it's, um, I think Commissioner Kribel and I are on it. Um, you've got uh, Chief Cahill, City Administrator Chicarone, Chief Fuster, Donna Peterson, Mr. Santoro is on there, um, Maria Mento. It's pretty much everybody does anything with governing body. So.
Right.
We have a group there that deals with emergency management and those types of things. Uh, resolution three eighty three, and I'm going to defer to Commissioner Kribel, and this is the designation of Vettner West as an eco park and requesting assistance. The federal, state, county, and local agencies to make Vettner West eco park a reality. So this has been an effort that, that Tim has taken under his wing since we've been in office.
Yeah.
Um, almost monthly or at least yearly asks for, for dollars and, and help.
Yeah.
And Jim Rotella has been very helpful getting us. We just got two hundred K.
Yep.
From the feds on that. And uh, I know I got a call from Congressman Dan Drew's office.
Yeah.
But they're very interested in helping push this forward.
Yeah, it's a, it's an overnight success, six years in the making. And there's a, a, a group effort continue, uh, we started out with uh, Jim Rotella, who's been uh, brilliant and very helpful. And once we sort of um, uh, brainstormed on the, on, on what was already laid as a groundwork in our, in, in the master plan, um, we got together a really great team and uh, to help with his uh, with our application. And um, one of the things I, I think is a real linchpin is the V E C C. So we, we talked to the, the uh, the science department there. They are, they um, they, they were, they their part in the, in, that made our application so strong was that they're creating a curriculum around the, the eco park um, in a lot of different ways. But we got some really um, some really great uh, uh, experienced people there. You have the Stockton University Coastal Research, uh, Jacques Cousteau National uh, Research, um, United States Fish and Wildlife, the Nature Conservancy, the ACUA, as well as our green team. So these are all people that have a big reach and a lot of experience and some local talent as well um, on the green team that is going to help um, get this first step, which will be uh, conceptual design and then sustainability of the um, of the um, uh, the living shoreline.
Right.
And all that stuff can be in a, can be a, can be part of a curriculum for our students. So there's just so many cross references. You can read all about it and then that's um, article as well. And.
Plug the local.
But it's a, it's an exciting project for us, and I think it's a great first step um, in a huge area that could also be a place for recreation. It could be a place for um, kayak and fishing and crabbing potentially, as well as just uh, walking through the nature where I get the opportunity to row around it, but you get to see the wildlife, the, the, the herons and the, and the um, the osprey that are constantly hunting out there. It's, it's really, it's really a great space that I don't think everybody in Vettner. The first thing people ask when I talk about it is where is it?
Right.
Like you, there's a hundred and fifty acres here and people don't know where it is. So you kind of have to point it out on a map.
Out of Vettner West.
But now they'll get the chance to know where it is. And it's there. It's the Vettner communities.
Kudos to you in, in pushing this and keep pushing it because it was a thing that has taken a lot of pushing.
Yeah, thank you.
And, and right after the, the parade, holiday parade last, earlier this month, I ran into two gentlemen at at the end of the parade, kind of just hanging around. He's, what are we doing with Vettner West? And I told him about this. He didn't want to be involved.
Yeah.
So they're Kai, heavy kayakers and they want to do that. So.
That's the other thing. Every, as soon as you start to freight, as soon as you start to paint a picture of what this could be, you get a lot of, of people that are willing to help. So I think it's going to be a, it, it, it's got a lot of goodwill out there.
Good, good. Next resolution is three eighty four, and it is authorizing the approval of submitted grant application and executed grant agreement with U S Department of Homeland Security for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty three flood mitigation assistance program. There's one typo in that resolution. It says township instead of city. Um, not a big deal, but just they, they give you a generic one. It just should say city instead of um.
All right. I'll, I'll take care of it. Will you sign? Thank you.
Um, any questions on that? I mean, this is something we, we kind of do each year.
Yep.
Gets us funds for, for all that. Resolution three eighty five is awarding de Blasio and associates for stormwater G I, G I S mapping services, not to exceed twenty two thousand dollars. This will be part of our ongoing stormwater management throughout the city. This will help map that and get a G I S based. Um, is Ernie here yet? He's not. I'm going to talk to him about tying this in to GPSing our fire hydrants as part of that project, uh, maybe in addition to this. But he's been looking to do that as part of our water service program. Um.
So this, this is not just Vettner Heights. This is the entire city?
Yeah, I believe this, this may be more of, of, um, no, this is the whole city.
Yeah.
Yep. All right.
Great.
Resolution three eighty six is awarding Horn Electric contract to replace the anchor bolts and washers on the boardwalk lights, not to exceed twenty four thousand dollars. Um, if you recall, right around July fourth, we had a couple poles blow over right, right after that, that storm that came through. Well, we found out why. A lot of the bolts on the bottom of those, that Atlantic's electric forgot to mention when we, we took over those poles, uh, were in poor shape. So we're replacing those and, and part of that is taking the boards up. And then Horn will come in and actually do lift the pole off and replace those bolts. So something that's needed maintenance. Uh, resolution three eighty seven is authorizing the city authorized for request proposals for our pool of engineers. As you know, we jointly do that with the city of Margate. And we have a pool of six or seven engineering firms that we bid out all of our projects to. It's more of a, a qualification request, really.
Right.
Do that every year.
And it works.
It does. It does. Gives us the opportunity to pre-qualify them and then they bid on our, our projects that we need to work on. Resolution three eighty eight, authorizing employee assistance program services for the year of two thousand and twenty four. And that's a maximum uh, payment to them of just about thirty five hundred dollars, thirty four eighty. On that, that services we, we use for our staff and employees. Are you good with that?
Yes.
Do that each year. Resolution three eighty nine uh, is license agreement for the American Cancer Society Bike Ride on June second, two thousand and twenty four, and authorizing certain closures during the American Cancer Society event. Um, this, this is a big event for Vettner City. Um, this was something that's been held for years in Atlantic City. Um, they had a scheduling issue with the city, um, and they approached us.
Yep.
Uh, they came to us and met with our O E M, our chief police and our police department. I think um, Captain Wooton was the first one to meet with them.
Yep.
I met with them once. I think you've met with them as well.
Yes.
Um, and we had some concerns.
Yeah.
Where, where roadways aren't as, as wide as, as uh, some of those in A C. So it worked out and we had to change the date a little bit, I think.
I think it was the duration of the event too, because you're going to have people uh, and all, all, all day long coming through there, or at least a large window of time. But we worked all, we worked through that. We had a, a Chief Fuster work through the final details and brought it to a good resolution that he's comfortable with and that the Cancer Society is. That June, that June second date was the key.
Yep. It'll be a good event for the city. Bring more people into.
Yeah.
Our town and.
Anytime, anytime we can bring more people into see the city and, and get a chance to spend uh, some time here.
Yep. And what that is, that's a ride from Philadelphia to here. It's a sixty five mile bicycle ride. Uh, not me, not me.
I'm going to skip it.
Yeah. Um, resolution three ninety is uh, let's see, authorizing a transfer appropriations, end of year transfers, Amy, just moving stuff from one, one bucket to the other. Resolution, anything specific we had to go over on that?
No.
Okay.
Normal.
Resolution three ninety one is approval of special items of revenue and appropriation. Um, this looks like this was some body armor funding.
Correct.
From, from P D. Okay, good with that. Resolution three ninety two is a three year license agreement for the Funky Pickle, two thousand and twenty three, and Vettner Music Festival, July twenty four, two thousand and twenty four, two thousand and twenty five, and two thousand and twenty six, and authorizes certain closures during the festival. It's been a great event for us.
Yeah.
It's weird. We need a rematch.
We need a rematch. Yeah, yep. You got, you got me last time.
You're going to, you're going to practice.
I am. Oh, I've been practicing. No.
It was a lot of, it's a great event. It's a good fun event.
Yeah, circles on its count.
I did, yeah. He beat me at the, we did, we did a little uh, uh, one, two, two on two. But the, but the main thing we had was that it was such a great turnout. They do such a great job. There's a little bit of conflict that it's happening during the season and we already have things going on. But the reality is that's when people want to come.
Right.
To our town. And this gives them a reason to, and they, they do a great job. They, they, they make that um, they really make our tennis courts look like a, like a Wimbledon event. They put out lounges and.
Here.
Yeah, there he is. Oh, all right. So you do, you do a great job. Yeah, we're happy to have.
I'm going to need, if he's been practicing, I'm going to need points or something. Uh, so we're good.
And it's a lot of fun. They, they make it, uh, they make it an enjoyable event and, and um, hopefully it grows. So.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, the next one ties that as well. Resolution three ninety three is authorizing no parking and suspension of open container during special event Funky Pickle, Vettner Classic, and Music Fest um, for those same dates. So that'll be good. That's, that's for them to have their, because it is a music festival as well. We have alcohol there. So we have to make a special uh, adjustment for that.
Mm-hmm.
Resolution three ninety four, designating certain property in the city as an area in need of redevelopment, suit into local, suit into local redevelopment and housing law and authorizing a preparation redevelopment plan for respect there too. This one's the one for Mr. Placter. This is for the Vettner Professional Plaza. Um, again, I think they've also gone to.
Yes.
To the, the planning board.
Yes.
And they're, they've gotten that determination that it's consistent and, and we can move forward with that. So this will move that project forward as well. Another exciting location downtown. Appreciate you guys being here tonight. Um, you know, that, that property's been, certainly it's not really dilapidated, but it's, it's not fully used. Um, and that's what we're hoping will occur with, with this project. And, and just for the brief description of it, building along Vettner Avenue is not going anywhere. It's going to be repurposed and stay commercial, potentially some restaurant uses there. What will occur is the building back on Troy and, and Winchester will come down, the old girl's school. Uh, and there'll be residential townhomes built in and amongst that with parking all internals of the project. So that was something that I, that I think came out at the planning board review as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a, it's, it just represents good design, utilization of a space that's being underutilized year, year over year. And, and it brings, um, yes, it brings some density, but the reality is those comparable blocks, block by block, would all be residential. And, 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 and it's, it's not really changing the zoning. So it's really, in my opinion, it's being efficient with our space. And it could be an anchor for that, for that downtown. It could.
It'll activate it even more.
It'll bring, it'll bring, it makes the other businesses more viable, which is good for the city. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of wins.
Agreed.
Best of luck.
Resolution three ninety five is authorizing a refund for tax overpayment. Good with that one. Next one, three ninety six is a refund of uh, water and sewer overpayment. And three ninety seven is authorizing cancellation of tax and refunds. It for resolutions.
I'm sorry, Mary, can we add two?
Oh, that's right. We have two to add. I apologize. So we're going to add resolutions three ninety eight, three ninety nine. Couldn't get the four hundred, right?
We got enough tonight.
Uh, three ninety eight is resolution uh, authorizing non-enforcement of certain parking meters through March thirty first, two thousand and twenty four. So what this is, is right now, through the holidays, we don't enforce our parking meters in our commercial.
Commercial zones.
Um, we're going to extend that to March thirty first. It's helped our local businesses. They, they're seeing an uptick of people coming in there because of that, and it's more convenient. Um, so we're going to extend that. And I credit both commissioners, uh, Mento and, and Kribel for, for pushing this through um, and talking me through it. That helped. Um, so that's.
Yeah, the only concern is that the parking is designed to keep people rotation in front of businesses, but at the same time, we're in our off season here. So there's not as though there is that much of a
Turnover.
Parking.
More for the summertime to keep.
In this, exactly. So I think it's a, it's a good, we're pulling, we're trying to pull levers to help the business.
Yep. And this, this came to us from the VBA.
Yes.
To do that. So it's good. Next one is resolution three ninety nine. This is authorizing emergency repairs and waiving requirements of local public contracts law. This is for Chief Fuster's office. We had, along with many other places in, in our region, had some significant other issues last Sunday night. You could have washed a car in Chief's office last week. So we got to do some emergency repairs there. We had the contractors. Thanks, Rick, for, for coordinating that in there today. We'll get those repairs done quickly.
Yeah.
Did not seem that it was going to be as bad as we thought. So.
I think you met with roofing and uh, appraisals today.
Yep.
So it was a bit of a money pit situation there.
Yeah. Old building.
Old building.
Old building. Um, so that's it. That's right. I didn't.
Yes, sir.
That time. Good. Um, discussion items. I don't have any specific um, discussion items. You good? Nothing?
No, um, the, the.
Everybody knows that the first meeting in January will be January.
Yes, I'll do that. Okay. Just a note from, from Lisa reminded me that our first meeting in January is going to be January fourth, um, not the typical eleventh. Won't be the second Thursday, it'll be the first Thursday of the month. Um, I will take blame for that. I'm moving that so I can attend another hearing elsewhere. Um, so thank you for accommodating me on that one. Um, okay.
The only thing I have would be that um, I wanted, I wasn't here to thank Shelley for the work she does on the, and our whole team of, of, of special events on the parade. But I just find it, it's great that as soon as the parade was over, she started sending out information on like the next year's and the, and the um, and the uh, the chef's night out.
Yes.
Her next event. So she's right into the next.
Right in the.
Round of uh.
I put a challenge out.
Of, 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 and then she does, she gives us, you know, she does, she gives all these, this to the city that no charge. She just is a, uh, she's a great volunteer.
I put a challenge out there. It turns, she threw it right back in my face. So I said, I was in Fort, where was I? Fort Lauderdale? Yeah, Fort Lauderdale for their Christmas celebration. And they had a snow hill for kids to sled down.
Oh, no.
It's in Fort Lauderdale. So it's built with wood and they just put snow down.
You have to be careful what you ask her for because she'll do it.
No, she threw it back at me. She said, I said, you're going to get that. Now I'm on the, on the hook for getting somehow snow in, well, we might get real snow. We, we have a chance of that. So it was fun. I sent her a picture of it. The kids loved it.
Yeah.
It was a lot of fun. We'll certainly run that by our uh, insurance carrier.
Yeah, right.
Do that. Tom's like, why is he bringing that up? Um, I don't have any discussion items. I have some comments later I'll, I'll make. So we'll open it up to the public at this point for anything that we've discussed that's on the agenda tonight. Anybody has any comments or questions, please bring them up now. Um, Jim, why don't we go to the uh, the online first?
Yeah, anybody on Zoom wishes to speak or comment on any of the items that are being discussed or voted upon tonight, please make yourself known and you'll be recognized. Nope.
Okay, don't see any there. Um, with that, we will close the public portion and we'll close our workshop and uh, call to order the regular. With that, we will close the public portion and we'll close our workshop and, uh, call to order the regular portion of our meeting. Uh, nobody in, in the, in the building wanted to speak, right? I didn't see anybody.
Not in Zoom.
All right. So we don't have minutes to approve, no ordinance introductions. We need a. Motion to open the public hearing on ordinance two thousand and twenty-three. That's zero two two, Wellington Avenue Redevelopment Plan.
Motion to open public hearing as described.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, this open is the public hearing on the Wellington Avenue Redevelopment Plan. We'll go in the room. Anybody here with any comments or questions? Please step forward, state your name and make your comments. Seeing none, we'll go to our online, our Zoom meeting. Jim?
Anybody on Zoom wish to question or comment on ordinance two thousand and twenty-three dash zero two two? Nope.
Okay, thank you. Motion to close.
Motion to close, public hearing.
My second. All in favor?
Aye.
Um, I need a motion to adopt ordinance two thousand and twenty-three dash zero two two, Wellington Avenue Redevelopment Plan.
Motion to adopt ordinance as described.
Second, roll call please.
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Mayor Langgraff.
Yes. Okay, I need a motion to adopt resolutions two thousand and twenty-three, three sixty-three through three ninety-nine.
Motion to resolutions as described by consent.
I'll second. Roll call please.
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Mayor Langgraff.
Yes. Okay, approval of bills and payroll. Amy?
Payrolls for this period, one million eight hundred seventy-one thousand, four hundred seventeen dollars, twenty-four cents. Payables for this period, eleven million, four hundred fifty-five thousand, seven hundred forty-nine dollars, sixty-six cents.
Okay. All right, I need a motion to approve bills and payroll.
Motion to approve bills and payroll.
My second. Roll call please.
Mr. Kribel?
Yes.
Mayor Langgraff?
Yes. Okay, announcements, safety report, that's on our agenda, that's typically printed there. Um, Commissioner comments or reports? Do you have anything else?
No, not, uh, just a, I wish everybody a happy new year and a great, we're working with the, the team we've had. We have a, had a really productive. Ups and downs, as always.
Um, just following up on that, Merry Christmas to everyone and Happy New Year coming up. Uh, Hanukkah, we just went through. We had, thanks Tiffany. Have a good night. Um, we had some fun events through, through Hanukkah. Um, both the, both the, uh, were enjoyable. More of the, the Bots more than ours, but. Those is the production.
Those is the production.
Production. It's a lot of fun. Um. Just some, some upcoming events that we have on New Year's Day. We have our polar bear plunge. It starts at, at noon at Santucci's, the pre-registration.
Pre, pre-game? I don't know. I haven't decided yet.
Okay. All right. I'm going in this.
All right, all right.
Feel well this year. I think we're going to try it.
All right.
Um, and then at one o'clock down at Newport Avenue is when the plunge occurs. And then there's a post-party at Santucci's after that as well, so. Um. Two up there, a couple of updates on projects. Lafayette Avenue Water Main is undergoing, uh, replacement. Uh, once that's finished, I think the main is complete. They're now tying in all the laterals, service lines. Um, once that's complete, they'll move to Monmouth Avenue by Cornwall, uh, down by Public Works. Replace that line and that's going to be a while. That's a very intricate replacement. There's a lot of, a lot of utilities in that street. Um, and we're replacing some curb and sidewalk in that area as well. Been talking with Matt, Matt Thorne, our, our city engineer. He's making some suggestions on how to change up some of that and maybe increase some of the sidewalk replacements. I think. That'll help that area quite a bit. It's one of the bumpiest sections.
Hmm.
Of our, of our city, so. And some pretty hefty infrastructure issues there. Um. Lastly, we have a, and we put it out on our website. I think it got out there today. That was copied from Atlantic City Electric and, um, Bert Lopez sent out an email. They provide what's called an L I H E A P, La Heep, uh, grant. That provides up to nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and no payback is required of a grant to help you with your fuel or your, uh, any type of dwelling, uh, for heat. Electricity for this winter. Um, customers don't have to be behind on their bills to receive the grant. Um, you can find that information on our website. Um, and also on our social media platform. So if you have any questions, you can certainly reach out to Atlantic City Electric. It is on their website as well. It's a really good program for people that might need help keeping warm this winter. Um. Uh, I don't think there's anything really else in here. But I thank Bert for sending it along and, and again, these are good programs that, that help people in need, so very helpful.
I do have one little thing, just to say that it's, it's just a, um, we had a, uh, that with the rainstorm, we had a water rescue that utilized a. Um, where the fire department utilized one of the free army surplus Humvees that they've retrofitted with all like spare parts that they've had. And a little, uh, we have one, one particular firefighter who's got heavy equipment, uh, experience who, um, helped retrofit it. But it comes in, uh, so here, in this case, there's a particular streets that heavily flood. A person was in three foot of water, had to be rescued from her vehicle. They put this vehicle that is designed for that type of water. It could go up to five feet and still operate. And the, the, and the, the expensive equipment stays on, stays out of harm's way.
Yep.
And so, and we've seen through Sandy that these types of vehicles are much more u- useful than the, the heavy ton trucks that we had. They're easier to get into and they're more maneuverable in our streets. And this was just a good, this was something that they've been, you know, he's been, um, keeping, and of course, our fire department is excellent at keeping their equipment in top shape. So he's got, uh, and, uh, and it just came in handy. It was a good use. Saw the video of it. Yeah.
Did.
Yeah.
I, I, the one thing I have on my list to actually talk about is that. So. That flooding, while we did have three inches of rain that day. Was also the result of a power outage at our pump stations, or our storm pump stations there had no power.
Right.
And right in the middle of that.
Hmm.
Uh, we had a short, so it, it blew the fuse on the poles. Atlantic's electric came out, put that back in. As soon as it. Was put back into order, it pumped the water down over the next hour, a few hours, but, uh, we are working on, I talked to Ernie today about the pump at Fremont. And, uh, and Fulton, both of those, uh, pump stations, we're going to look at improving. Fulton Avenue, I think we're going to add a pump and a bigger wet well, which will help clear that street. And Fremont needs a little bit less. They already have two pumps there. But it needs a little bit of maintenance there. So we're going to be putting that on, on our next, uh. Capital improvement. Uh, it's not a huge number, but. Fremont or Fulton will be, Fremont will be just minor maintenance, but.
Right.
Um, it, it's a challenge when you get that much water. What, what a lot of people don't understand, and, and if you've moved to the island from. A region, uh, suburbs, you have stormwater basins. You know, Mr. Platter, you've been part of projects all over the, the, the state where you have large stormwater basins. Um, big open holes in the ground that water goes into when it rains. We don't have that luxury here on the islands. Our streets are our stormwater basins. When the volume of water exceeds the amount of water that can go through the catch basins.
Right.
And our pumps can't keep up. And if we have a high tide, there's no place for it to go. That's where the water sits.
Hmm.
Um, we have several spots around the city that flood a lot. Um, we've. Looked at fixing those and we're doing our best. Um, but when you get three inches of rain in a, in a few hour time period. You're not going to keep up with that. You just can't. So, uh, I know that's not going to solve people's problems, but that's an explanation of why our streets flood down here because that's the. The last resort of, of stormwater management, so.
Cause and effect.
Yep. Uh, with that, just want to wish everyone a safe and, and happy holiday, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. This is our last meeting of the year, so. Um. Everyone enjoy the holiday. The weather looks good. No snow.
No.
But, uh, enjoy. So that's all I have. Got anything else?
No.
Tom, you have anything?
Just, uh, thank you for the confidence that you've both shown in me and Maria who's not here tonight, but, uh, to have me staying on for some period of time into the future. It's much appreciated. I've thoroughly enjoyed my time here so far. Um, first mayor I ever worked for used to say all the time, there are no problems, only opportunities. And I think that spirit lives here. You guys are problem solvers. You have a vision for what you want the city to be. And I want to be part of making that come to fruition with you. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, Tom. You are definitely part of this team, so we appreciate your work with us. Uh, with that, we'll have one last public comment. Uh, we'll open that up to the public for comments on anything that, um, anyone wants to talk about tonight in a motion.
Motion open for public comment.
My second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, step up to the mic if you have any comments or questions tonight. Welcome to comment. Jim, you want to ask anybody out there in, in Zoom land?
Anybody on Zoom wish to question or comment on any items? Please make yourself known.
Okay, seeing none?
Oh.
Anything, Jim? Nothing?